According to the Mickey up there at six o'clock.
Do what?
According to the Mickey up there at six o'clock. Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Call this meeting to order. It's now six o'clock. Welcome Midwest City Council meeting, the 24th of January version, and we'll try not to do too much damage tonight. Call a meeting to order, and I would ask that Mr. Sullivan come down and offer the invocation. Pledge allegiance will be led by Councilman Byrne. So please stand.
Do you bow with me, please? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this, the moisture we're receiving today, Lord, and the beauty of the snow. Father, we, we know that there are men and women all over this area tonight who are at the ready in case the roads get bad, and we thank you for their service. Father, we thank you for the men and women of this council and their service of, for this city. They have decisions before them tonight, and I ask your discernment and your wisdom be upon them, and always give them peace in their decisions. Father, we thank you so much for this great state and this great nation, men and women who are guaranteeing the freedom to assemble like we're doing right here tonight. We thank you for those who are sacrificing away from home, and we just ask your protection be upon them. Thank you so much for the blessing of your son, Jesus. Thank you for the blood that was shed on our behalf, and we ask all these favors in his holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a proclamation to do this evening, and this one's bittersweet, actually. So bear with me. David? For those of you that don't know, this is David Hudeberg, part of Midwest City for sixty-plus years. Hudeberg Chevrolet used to be down on the 29th and Monrooney for fifty years, probably.
Long time. We moved in eighty-five.
And then now over on I-40. But the Hudeberg family has been a part of this community since, almost since its inception, and they have been great community partners. Hudeberg Foundation, all the stuff that they've done for this community, you really can't summarize in a short proclamation, but we're going to try to. David and his family are retiring out of the car business after all this time, well-deserved retirement, and it's being taken over by another, another company. But I can guarantee you that whoever takes over is not going to match what the Hudebergs have done for us over the years. So with that being said, whereas Paul Hudeberg bought his first dealer, car dealership at age twenty-two in his first in Midwest City in nineteen fifty-seven, a Chevrolet, that's Paul Hudeberg, I should say, not David, a Chevrolet dealership which he managed while expanding and raising his family. And whereas Paul's family carried on his business, including Midwest City dealership led by his son David, who helped grow it into the iconic Hudeberg Auto Group. Whereas the Hudeberg Auto Group has blessed, has been blessed to weather two devastating tornadoes. I remember all your cars were in the Holiday Inn. I remember that day well.
We'll never forget that day.
One in late nineteen sixty and one in May third nineteen ninety-nine outbreak, as well survived several severe recessions. Whereas Midwest City would not be what it is today without the invaluable support of the Hudebergs, with such charities as the Hudeberg Endowment for Student Services at Rose State, which serves at-risk high school students in the Middel area, encouraging them to continue their education, as well as the generous contributions to Midwest City Public Events, the Chamber of Commerce, our schools, and Rose State College and Rotary Club. Whereas the city of Midwest City is especially grateful for David's leadership in saving the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in our fleet purchases over the years, and his support on projects of improving our golf course and the air shows, which have been fortunate enough to host, and holiday lights events each year, and the National Buick Club Car Show. I therefore, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three as Hudeberg, David Hudeberg Day in the city of Midwest City, and urge everyone to congratulate David on his retirement and blessed future. David, again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Once again, that's a, that's a bittersweet presentation, but David, I do wish you the best, and God bless you and your family. Thank you for being here tonight. We move into community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon?
Tickets for Midwest City's annual Daddy Daughter Dance are now on sale. The event will be held on January, Saturday, January twenty-eighth, this Saturday, at the Reed Conference Center. Sessions are available for early afternoon, mid-afternoon, and late afternoons. Tickets can be purchased online through the city's website and the Eventbrite. Youth League registration for, is open now for T-ball, softball, and baseball. All that information, once again, is on the MidwestCityOK.org website and registration forms. Appointments for our free annual state and federal income tax preparation services called VIDA will begin January thirty-first. You can call four oh five seven three nine one two three nine, seven three nine one two three nine, to make an appointment on Tuesdays and Thursdays from noon to five for pre-income tax preparation. And the last thing I have is, we are continuing to work on the sound system in this, in this council chamber, so we've made some changes. They've tried to tune it in a little bit for tonight, so please leave your mics where they're at and just not, don't speak too far away from them. Those are the marching orders. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, we now move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so that council by unanimous consent can approve the routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests to discuss an item, or unanimous consent is not received, then the item is, or items will be removed and heard in regular order. The chair would entertain a motion, and then we do need to remove item three and move it to the discussion agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item three to be pulled for discussion.
I'm sorry, I also, if I could, Mr. Mayor, pull item two, I suppose, three. And then I move to approve, after pulling item two and three. You, you mentioned three, right? Is that the one you were pulling?
Yes.
And to approve the rest of that consent agenda.
Okay, we, we've kind of got opposing motions, so Ms. Eads, would you defer to Ms. Banna to make the motion?
Yes.
And amend it?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Banna.
Second her motion.
I have a motion. Any second? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action of approving supplemental budget adjustments to the following funds for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three: increased disaster relief expenditures, sixty thousand dollars; police capitalization expenditures, eighty-four thousand dollars; disaster relief for neighborhood services, ninety thousand dollars. Mr. Cromar, if you'd like to go through those.
Sure.
I guess what's the question?
Yes, what's, what's the question?
Instead of just going through.
Mr. Cromar, the question's not so much for you as far as a budgetary issue. I think, I don't know, maybe it's the fire chief or the police chief. I noticed one of the replacements is on one of the sirens.
Correct.
And I was just wondering and curious, and I know that that one particular siren was purchased pretty recently, I think within the last year in the memos.
For the tornado sirens, correct?
Yeah, I'll answer that question. So that siren was struck by lightning. It was a new siren that was partially paid by grant money. So it was struck by lightning, and we will have, we will have to order parts for it, a motherboard and multiple other parts that will take some weeks to get in and be repaired. So that, that's the cost. It is insured. I don't know how much the deductible will be on that, but we, we do have insurance coverage.
That was my question, is whether or not we have warranties or insurance on such expensive.
Not warranty on for, because it's a lightning strike, but we do have insurance.
All right. With that, I move to approve. Thank you.
Fantastic. I'll be here for three, I guess.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item number two. All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item number three, go ahead, Mr., or actually number, yeah, number two.
Three.
Number three, wherever.
Item number three, discussion, consideration, possible action of accepting and approving the financial audit of the city of Midwest City for the year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. We have Tia Tia Cromar and Jake from...
State Farm?
Jake from State Farm.
That's right.
From Arledge and Associates.
The official last name's Winkler, not from State Farm, but yes. The, well, first of all, thank you all for having me out. I do appreciate it. Thank you all for choosing Arledge for the audit this year. It was an honor and a privilege to be able to audit the city.
This is your first year.
This is our first year on the engagement. So we took over from the longtime auditor, RSM, and we will, we'll go through that. Let's actually hit the report real quick. So we'll start on page five. This is your independent auditor's report. There is another matter where we did note that the previous year's financial statements were audited by a, another auditor, but we did do a work paper review on those. We felt that their opinion was supported and, and that the work papers were in order, so we did feel like that we could rely on their figures. The other modification that you will see to this report is related to a change in accounting principle, which is related to the implementation of GASB eighty-seven, which is Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number eighty-seven, which is the recognition of leases. They've changed the way that they are doing those. If you have questions regarding that, I'll be happy to cover those momentarily, but ultimately, it wasn't a huge impact for the city. It's kind of different because you guys don't have a lot of lease activity under the new standard. However, I will also say this is a clean opinion, okay? So we do not have any, we believe that the financial statements are reasonably stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We do not, you will notice that the opinion does look a little bit different this year. We had to implement Statement on Standards Number one hundred thirty-seven, which is an auditing standard. It does outline the auditor's responsibilities in bullet point form. You'll see those five bullet points on page six. That just kind of gives a very high-level overview on what we are responsible to do. I'm going to kind of move forward here. On page ten, I like to highlight this. I am not going to talk a whole lot about your operations. I don't, mainly because you guys do not have a bunch of audit, you don't have any audit, any audit adjustments, no uncorrected misstatements, no journal entries of any type, which basically means that you all have been making decisions based upon good information throughout the year, which is the most important thing about an audit, is to make sure that you guys have been able to do that. But if you are interested in operations and management's assessment of those operations throughout the year, that discussion begins on page ten and will continue all the way until page sixteen. Very good outline, if you have not read that, and you are, I would encourage you all to do so. Your statement of net position is on page eighteen, and activities are on page nineteen. I'm going to move down and discuss the general fund on page twenty-one. So with the restrictions that you all have on your balances, there's really not a whole lot that you have a lot of sway over in terms of your council, because funds are so restricted, and they're tied up in budget requirements. However, one of the things where you do have a lot of control is over your general fund. One of the things I like to highlight is, how much unassigned fund balance do you have in your general fund, which you have about four point four million? Much of that is held in actual cash, so that is free, that's the free amount of money that you have in terms of assets within your general fund. Now, what does that mean? That means that you guys have been managing this very, very well. That's not a very common thing that we're seeing with cities right now. Everybody's got a lot of cash because of the ARPA funds that have been coming in, and the COVID relief funds that have come in, but most of, all of that is going to be restricted for their, those purposes. So the general fund overall is very healthy out here, which is a good thing to see. Okay, so now I am skipping way down. You will see additional note disclosures surrounding the, I turned this to it and then tell you, we're actually going to be the audit, so that might separate you all, have a separate audit. Okay. The form is going to relate to physician that turned forty back. It is going, we work a lot, work with our, make, do one of the things we, we, in terms of, I will, if you for the, not even.
With our finance director, he educated me as well during one of these meetings. Throughout the report, I noticed there is language that continues to repeat itself that there's guarantees or one hundred percent that everything is, but for you, that this may be verified.
It's not, I mean, I mean, if I had, I could shoot fifty dollars, and we'd be here all year. It's a very, we do those. And forensic audits are very detailed, deep dives. What we are trying to get at, again, is whether there are control issues, and generally, if we're, just to let you know, you can probably, we put up here, we had, I want to say, most of our sample population were between third items, seeing a very, very patient in terms of what we had done. And so when you're looking, many, already, not going to have much going on any. So when you start, so my, sixty, other than sixty-five day, in this day, so when we start looking at those items, are there, are they following gap? We miss any control issue in terms of approval process, we're looking at all that nation. That's why this is. I'm just going to put different eyes on the team that are going to do the, this practice is all different. You can say, best case, get different on a time. Is, is, can cover familiarity. Exactly. There, there, I've worked in the past, actually worked for ten years, and they would give me a financial statement and trial balance, and I would look at it, and I could literally just go, I know that's not right. Okay? I know that's a problem because of the familiarity I have with that client. Do we have different people on the engagement each year? Absolutely, because it's public accounting, and we can't hold people. It's turnover, and that's just what happens. Now, overall, we're going to try and keep the team as consistent as possible. This was our first year on the engagement. And so, you know, it's a, it's a process in terms of learning the client, getting familiar with the, how things go. We do all of that documentation upfront, and then the following year, we'll come out, we'll do inquiries again, and we'll make sure that everything that we have on file is reasonable. But yeah, I mean, we'll probably have the same senior. I will still be the partner on the job, Lord willing, and, and we'll have probably an actual, we just hired a manager, so we'll have a new manager on it. So there will be different eyes that are going to look at it each year, just because of the turnover and change in staffing and our scheduling. But on the whole, we really try to hold it consistent, just because, you know, we're not a control, because we're not. We're not an internal control for the city. But at the same time, if there was an error or something, and people know the city well enough and how things work, then it does, allows you to focus a lot more on the analysis and a lot less on, well, let me figure out how they do things. It's like, no, I know how they do things. I want to actually make sure I'm analyzing the information here and coming up with a good conclusion. Good questions, by the way. So generally, these are pretty quiet, so.
Go ahead with your last.
Yeah, you got it, you got it. So the second letter that we have is the post-audit communication letter. This is a high-level overview of kind of how the audit went in terms of our working with management. Couple of things I'll point out is in note one of the financial statements. If you are curious as to how the city accounts for different items, note one of the financial statements will outline all of that. Again, you did have the implementation of GASB eighty-seven this year, the new lease standard. There are management estimates that are going to be a part of this. Those are outlined on page one. We did not, we did not see any indications of management bias in those estimates. So they, we believe that they are following generally accepted accounting principles in determining those estimates. We do believe that you have a sensitive disclosure in there. The pension disclosures are obviously something that you, you always have to pay attention to, not that you actually have a whole lot of control over them. But as you can see, in the rising interest rate environment, those discount rates that are going to be used, if you actually go and look at those one percent discount rate swing, one plus one or minus one can really affect your balance sheet. So you want to make, you know, monitor that, do what you can, if there is anything. I mean, I know statutorily there really isn't, but if there is anything you can do on those, just pay attention to those balances and, and manage that appropriately. We believe the financial statements disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. We did not have any difficulties encountered in performing the audit. No corrected or uncorrected misstatements. We had no disagreements with management. They did make certain representations to us in a letter dated December twenty-first, twenty-two. Tia Tia has a copy of that letter, if you would like to see it. There were, there were consultations with other accountants. Crawford does assist, Crawford and Associates does assist with the financial statement preparation for the engagement, and we do not have any other audit findings or issues that we need to report. So overall, this is a no news is good news audit, outside of the fact that I'm new here, and that's pretty much the only news and part of all this. So with that, any other questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Do you mind if I have any other questions of Jake or Tia Tia?
You're very welcome.
With that being said, a...
Motion to approve.
You read my mind. I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a interruption due to some other circumstances, so the, we're going to have to leave routine business right now and go into executive session to accommodate two presenters. So with that being said, Chair, entertain a motion to...
Go to, let me read the executive session, then we recess.
Okay.
Executive session, number one, discussion, consideration, possible action. One, entering into executive session is allowed under twenty-five OS, section three oh seven C eleven to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of proposal entice a business to remain or to locate within the city at the Soldier Creek Industrial Park, less than accept lot one and, and two, and open session authorizing the city manager administrator to take actions appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
With that being said, the Chair entertain a motion to recess the agenda and move into executive session and move upstairs to accommodate the executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll now move into executive session. We'll be back as time permits. Thank you. Special Economic Development Authority. Once again, we have an executive session. At a moment that we call it to order and recess and go into the executive session. Executive session is the same for the intended for the council. I entertain a motion to do so.
Motion to approve or to enter executive session. Sorry about that.
Motion to postpone the executive session.
With a motion and a second, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. We are now in recess of the economic development. I call it order to the Special Utilities Authority. And we do have an executive session attached to that. And I entertain a motion to recess that agenda and go into executive session.
Motion to postpone the session.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension. Now we are in the executive session, ladies and gentlemen, and we'll be back.
And return to open session of council, special economic agenda and utilities.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries, we are now back into general session. With the recommendation of...
You might want to say flip.
We are in regular session of council.
Make a motion to authorize the staff to proceed as discussed in executive session.
We got a motion in a second, any further discussion, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries, move into the discussion item of our agenda, there will be discussion item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Number one, and we'll table number one.
We'll table number one, table or take no action?
We need to take, we're gonna go ahead and say aye. We'll have to take a vote to table.
Chair, table. I have a motion to table in a second, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries, move into the discussion item number two.
Discussion consideration possible action of awarding the bid to and entering into a contract with Mid-America Golf and Landscape Inc., DBA, Mid-America Sports Construction for eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars to construct the soccer complex project, a two thousand and eighteen general obligation bond project. City council delegates the mayor to sign and execute the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This is our, I'm sorry. We got four bids for this project, and the lowest and best bid is Mid-America Sports Construction. The contractor drove down from Lee's Summit to be here tonight, and he's still here. We also have folks' leadership from the soccer complex.
And this is for the regrading and redoing of the soccer complex, correct?
Approximately five fields, and adding lights.
And this is part of the general obligation bond?
Yes, twenty eighteen.
Within budget.
And it's in budget.
Can the contractor come up and explain what he's gonna do for us?
Yes.
Is he here?
Yes, he's here, and he is an owner's representative, so he might not be too specific of it.
Just have him give us, can he give us an overview of what we can expect?
Sure. Yeah.
My name's Brock Wilson, again, I work for Mid-America Sports. I think overall on the project, we were stripping the soil, regrading the site, moving some electrical, putting some lights up, and new sod, I believe irrigation as well.
And you're gonna make this a top-notch soccer facility for everybody around the region, right?
Yes, sir.
One question I have is, and doesn't have anything to do with whether I'm gonna water or not, is how long will the soccer complex be dormant?
So, so we worked with the soccer club and talking about how they run their seasons, we're gonna start April third, and that'll give us the time to grade and re-sod, and then, just like the golf course, we have to let the sod grow in, and hopefully they'll be done and ready to play on September.
So do they have any of their season between April and October?
I would have to defer to the soccer club, but, I mean, that's, we worked it out with them, that was the best we could get, and get the sod in place.
So I'm curious if it's gonna affect the soccer play, for, are you gonna take them someplace else, or how's that gonna work?
So we're working with, the fields that are actually being done, there's five fields on the north side of our main building, the rest of the fields are still gonna be usable, so we're gonna be using them for most of our games. Our season actually will start February, end of February, first of March, we're gonna play most of the games up to April, and beyond that, we're gonna play on other fields, we can actually use the MAC down on Twenty-Ninth, we've been granted access to that for some games if we need to, to complete the spring season. And our next season will start late August, first of September, if those fields become active again and ready to use, we should be good to go. We've got a big tournament coming in, the reason we're waiting till April third is we have a big tournament coming in, first weekend of April, April first, second, so we'll probably have a hundred and seventy something teams coming in, so we'd need the fields. That's why they're starting the third, and then hopefully if they get it all done by, like I said, September, we have another tournament coming in October, first weekend of October, we really hopefully get them back by then, because we'll have another hundred and seventy something.
Well, if they don't, Brandon's standing right there. That's, that's...
Since I started this project, Mr. Mercer and his leadership, we delayed the bid, the bidding of this project for how long, Matt? Several months, because we wanted to, they felt and we felt it best that we wait till the very, have the contractor ready to deploy, have him procuring materials and have things set up, get his equipment ready to deploy, and as soon as there can release these fields to the contractor, we felt like the April would be an optimal time, because Bermuda needs late summer growth in order to play, play on it again in the fall. And so, we, we delayed it almost a year.
Yeah, our spring season actually goes to about the middle of May, so we're figuring probably about four to six weeks of just moving some games around, and then, we just have a couple of summer camps that just won't affect.
Well, they're not gonna suffer if they go to the MAC to play soccer.
No, they won't complain.
No, and, and so, I started with the project, I handed it off to engineering a few months ago, and we worked with them for this timing, we, everybody in the, all the stakeholders felt like this timing was, was optimal for construction.
I have questions, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to learn a little bit more about the soccer club, it's the Midwest City Soccer Club, who makes up that entity, is it high school teams, adult teams, is it a private entity, or city organization, just out of curiosity?
We're actually a private, non, non-
And return to open session of council, special economic agenda and utilities.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. We are now back into general session. With the recommendation of. We are in regular session of the council.
Make a motion to authorize the staff to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries. Move into the discussion item of our agenda. There'll be discussion item number three, Mr. Lyon.
Number one, and we'll table number one.
Table number one. Table or take no action?
Table. We'll have to take a vote to table.
Chair, table.
I have a motion to table in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries, item number two.
Discussion consideration possible action of awarding the bid to and entering into a contract with Mid-America Golf and Landscape, Inc., DBA. Mid-America Sports Construction for eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars to construct the soccer complex project. A two thousand and eighteen general obligation bond project. City Council delegates the mayor to sign and execute the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This is our, I'm sorry. We got four bids for this project, and the lowest and best bid is Mid-America Sports Construction. The contractor drove down from Lee's Summit to be here tonight, and he's still here. We also have folks, leader, leadership from the soccer complex.
And this is for the regrading and redoing of the soccer complex, correct?
Approximately five fields and adding lights.
And this is part of the general obligation bond?
Yes.
Within budget.
And it's in budget.
Can the contractor come up and explain what he's gonna do for us?
Yes.
Is he here?
Yes, he's here, and he is an owner's representative, so he might not be to the specifics of it.
Just have him give us, can he give us an overview of what we can expect?
Sure. Yeah.
My name's Brock Wilson. Again, I work for Mid-America Sports. I think overall on the project, we were stripping the soil, regrading the site, moving some electrical, putting some lights up, and new sod, I believe irrigation as well.
And you're gonna make this a top-notch soccer facility for everybody around the region, right?
Yes, sir.
One question I have is, and doesn't have anything to do with whether I'm gonna water or not, is how long will the soccer complex be dormant?
So, so we worked with the soccer club and talking about how they run their seasons. We're gonna start April third, and that'll give us the time to grade and re-sod. And then, just like the golf course, we have to let the sod grow in, and hopefully they'll be done and ready to play on September.
So do they have any of their season between April and October?
I would have to defer to the soccer club, but I mean, that's, we worked it out with them. That was the best we could get and get the sod in place.
So I'm curious if it's gonna affect the soccer play. Are you gonna take them someplace else, or how's that gonna work?
So we're working with, the fields that are actually being done, there's five fields on the north side of our main building. The rest of the fields are still gonna be usable, so we're gonna be using them for most of our games. Our season actually will start February, end of February, first of March. We're gonna play most of the games up to April, and beyond that, we're gonna play on other fields. We can actually use the MAC down on Twenty-Ninth. We've been granted access to that for some games if we need to, to complete the spring season. And our next season will start late August, first of September. If those fields become active again and ready to use, we should be good to go. We've got a big tournament coming in. The reason we're waiting till April third is we have a big tournament coming in, first weekend of April, April first, second. So we'll probably have a hundred and seventy-something teams coming in, so we'd need the fields. That's why they're starting the third, and then hopefully if they get it all done by, like I said, September, we have another tournament coming in October, first weekend of October. We really hopefully get them back by then, because we'll have another hundred and seventy-something.
Well, if they don't, Brandon's standing right there. That's, that's.
Since I started this project, Mr. Mercer and his leadership, we delayed the bid, the bidding of this project for how long, Matt? Several months, because we wanted to, they felt and we felt it best that we wait till the very, have the contractor ready to deploy. Have him procuring materials and have things set up, get his equipment ready to deploy. And as soon as there can release these fields to the contractor, we felt like the April would be an optimal time. Because Bermuda needs late summer growth in order to play, play on it again in the fall. And so, we, we delayed it almost a year.
Yeah, our spring season actually goes to about the middle of May. So we're figuring probably about four to six weeks of just moving some games around. And then, we just have a couple of summer camps that just won't affect.
Well, they're not gonna suffer if they go to the MAC to play soccer.
No, they won't complain.
No, no, and so, I started with the project, I handed it off to engineering a few months ago, and we worked with them for this timing. We, everybody in the, all the stakeholders felt like this timing was, was optimal for construction.
I have questions. Sorry. Go ahead. Thank you. I just wanted to learn a little bit more about the soccer club. It's the Midwest City Soccer Club. Who makes up that entity? Is it high school teams, adult teams, is it a private entity or city organization, just out of curiosity?
We're actually a private, non-profit. We have basically a lease with the city to use the fields. The fields themselves are city property. So we kinda have that lease over all the teams, lot of Mid-Dell, some high school. We do have some high school competitive. Out here, we run recreational from U-four all the way to some U-sixteen, eighteens. We have academy teams from nine, seven, eight, nine, ten. Then we have competitive teams, all the way from eleven to U-nineteen high school age. So we run the whole gamut over here. We have about, I started down there in twenty fifteen as a president, and probably two hundred players. We're up to seven hundred something players now, around there, running all three programs. We have two camps, two large tournaments. Our tournaments from twenty fifteen would have fifty-something teams. We're, like I said, we're up to about a hundred and seventy-five something teams. We could, we could easily get over two hundred teams if we could start using some additional fields and regional and stuff like that. But, yeah, we're doing well out there, and we appreciate the city. City helps us a ton. We've done many things for us, and we hope to work hand in hand with this.
Well, thank you for being here. Soccer's about the only sport I know how to participate in, so this is exciting.
Get down and kick a ball, right?
Okay, is there any further question to the contractor?
I have a question for Mr. Bundy. So, Mr. Bundy, this is a geo-bond project again. And so I understand bids were received January tenth of twenty twenty-three for the project. Did we only have one bidder for the project?
No, we had four bidders.
Were any of those bidders from Midwest City?
No.
Were, and are there any subs referenced in this job?
No. Until we go under contract, we don't know generally who the subs are.
And we're still in a position of not finding out who the subs are?
No, but I will say that this particular contractor, Mid-America Sports Construction, did our MAC turf. And Lippert Brothers, who was overseeing that project, gave them glowing reference.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate the expertise. Here's my concern, and I'm gonna express this again here in a minute. So, this is a geo-bond project, and it bothers me when we don't have Midwest City contractors or Midwest City subcontractors that are involved in projects that we're funding with geo-bond dollars for Midwest City. So, I'm just gonna raise that point, and I'm gonna raise it here again in a minute, so that's just my two cents worth.
And that's.
I can tell you that we have, and we actually crafted documents, not for this bid, but for previous bids, where we asked for subcontractors. We asked for a listing of subcontractors. We ended up having to waive that requirement, because not a single contractor was willing at that moment in time to state who their subcontractors were gonna be, because of the market fluctuality that is going on, and who that subcontractor may be at that time. And Vaughn, I know Vaughn, you and I worked on that issue, and it is very, very difficult to get a list of subcontractors that a contractor may use. And we found it pretty much impossible to do, so we have removed that requirement or request from our bid documents at this time. Just because we found it was unsuccessful to attempt to acquire that information.
And my position on it is the same that I raised before when I asked this question, which is, it also doesn't require us to approve a contract until we're notified who the subs are. And based on our experience with other projects and the failures of those subcontractors, I think it's important that we require the contractors to put forward their subs. But, I'm one vote, so I've spoke my piece, and that's all I have to say about it.
Are there any more questions or comments?
Would it be possible to table this item until we have more clarity on the subcontractors?
I don't think it sounds like there's time to do that if they wanna get their stuff done and get their, their thing. I think we need to figure out a way to get more Midwest City contractors and subcontractors involved in the bidding process. But, not a single Midwest City contractor actually bid on it.
And I don't know, with the complexity of this type of project and specialized work, I don't know of any contractor in Midwest City that would do this type of work. We're talking about earth-moving, I don't, I don't know of any earth-moving contractors in Midwest City, any of the lighting. Any, basically the large parts of the work, even the irrigation. I think a lot of the irrigation is done by contractors in Oklahoma City, the greater metro area.
I guess my concern with that is, to me, when you talk about lighting, you talk about a electrician-based service. When you're putting in lighting.
But you're an electrician. I mean, I love Scott Wiggy to death, and Wiggy's Plumbing, but he's, he's an electrician. A plumber, he couldn't do one of these big projects. You have to have somebody.
Actually, the lighting in this would require a crane and a much bigger contractor than are actually working in Midwest City. These are the, the big industrial football-type lighting.
And I understand where you're coming from. I'm just looking at it from like a piecemeal project, and like you're talking about dirt excavation. I mean, you know, again, I understand the sophistication of what we're dealing with with regard to these fields and the experience that we have with these folks from the MAC. And I appreciate all of that. At the same time, I mean, at some point, you've got somebody presumably who's hauling dirt away or who's transporting dirt there, who's transporting sod there. To me, we have people in Midwest City who have the ability to do these things. Now, whether they come forward and bid these jobs or not, that's another question. You know, whether we're finding out who's actually being contacted for those, that's another question, so.
And plus too, if we delay this any, we run the risk of being totally over budget.
I, I understand. I, I'm not asking for a delay in it. I'm just making a conversation point.
With that being said, Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and, and Ms. Eads, we're gonna look into that. And, but, we can't do it and risk delaying projects. And I fully support your, your.
Yeah, I'm not asking to delay this project at all. I'm just raising the point of concern.
Okay, we do have an addendum item, item number, whatever number it is. Go ahead, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration possible action of approving a guaranteed maximum price amendment to the construction management contract with Lippert Brothers Construction, Inc. Associated with the multipurpose athletic complex phase-two construction in a guaranteed maximum price. Noctic seed, two million seven hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars, Mr. Sullivan.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you very much for indulging us in the last-minute submission of this item. Between our staff in the city manager's office and Lippert Brothers Construction, we've been scrambling since we opened bids last week to get to the point where we could get this on the agenda tonight. I would also like to thank you for supporting this project and allowing us, and also for Mr. Lyon, allowing us to move forward with this next phase. And hopefully with, if we can secure funding, we'll, we'll be able to have a couple more phases to complete this project. But I'll remind you that this phase is a concession facility, a very small, a very modest concession facility. A maintenance building, and we are doubling the paved parking at the MAC is basically the scope of the project. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Doesn't this include some signage out on Twenty-Ninth Street as well?
We are going to also add some signage on Twenty-Ninth Street. That technically, Mayor, is not part of this bid, but we are going to add some signage.
We would be remiss if we didn't thank you, Don, and Mr. Lyons for bringing this, because there's also some pipes that's gonna go in sewer and water. And that has been an extreme challenge for our staff. And I know that it took a lot to get to this point, and we're very fortunate that we have the people on staff that were able to get that done. Because we're dealing with another municipality when we're doing that. And it was, excuse me, I used the word "challenge," and that wasn't even close to what it was. So thank you very much.
Ms. Eads, I would also like to point out to your point on the previous item. This is a, what was referred to in the industry, a guaranteed maximum price delivery method, construction management delivery method. Tim used, Mr. Lyon, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to use first names up here. Mr. Lyon used this delivery method on the hotel, was very successful there. We used this delivery method to remodel Reed Baseball Complex. We were pretty successful there. I'll leave it at that. We got it done. But, in this particular type of delivery method, we do get to see who their subs are. If you look at your attachment, you'll see the bid packages. All of the bid packages had to be publicly bid in accordance with the open, or the Competitive Bidding Act of nineteen seventy-two, four, thank you. And we do get to see who their subs are, and we do get to vet them, and we do get to give input. I don't like that one, or yes, Mr. Construction Manager, I do like this one. If it happens to be one from Midwest City, we can get, you know, we can get involved in that and make that decision.
But there's not one from Midwest City, once again.
There's, this is very specialized work. I don't know of a contractor, any contractors in Midwest City that can do the kind of work that's in these bid packages. I'm not aware of anyone.
Even at the hotel, it was difficult, but we, we tried to get some of the subcontractors.
We would love to have Midwest City contractors, believe me. We would welcome it.
We asked them to bid the subs.
I have a couple of questions on the, basically the underpinnings of the GMP calculation. So, in the documents, it's under A point three, point one, point six. So number two subsection underneath that is tree clearing will be provided via mulching of the trees in place, not removed in hole and hauled off site. So I'm assuming that's a change from what we had originally anticipated with regard to this. Is that correct?
The, the clearing and grubbing of the site, we were very fortunate. If you'll notice, that the low bidder was quite a bit lower than the other two bid. I believe there were three bidders on that bid package. Are you referring to the bid package of grubbing?
I'm referring to the sections explaining the assumptions and clarifications, if any, upon which the guaranteed maximum price is based. So it's one of the other documents in that packet. It's the last page right above the signature lines that came along with that packet.
The budget, yes. I'm on, to be more specific, I'm on page six of the AIA document.
Yeah.
That lays out the budget and has each division. Yes, I'm, I'm with you now. I'm tracking with you. Okay, ask your question again now that I'm with you.
So, A point three, point one, point six, subpart two deals with tree clearing will be provided via mulching of the trees in place, not removal and hole and hauled off the site.
Correct.
So, I'm assuming we originally had contemplated the trees would be removed and hauled away based upon that clarification being in there. Does that cause us any problem with regard to the mulching of the trees versus removing and hauling those away?
This particular bidder of on that package that was the low bidder, he, he got very creative. He actually was the only site work contractor who came to the pre-bid. It was not a mandatory pre-bid. In the pre-bid, he asked us if it is okay to use what we call a forestry machine, which basically turns the trees into mulch, and then you can deal with the mulch much easier than you can the whole tree. Or you can choose to leave it on-site and use it for a soil amendment. And we said, yes, that's fine with us. We don't cut them down, haul them off, bulldoze them, burn them. We'll, we'll allow any of that. And he was able to save us quite a bit of money by using a forestry machine to clear the site rather than to bulldoze them and haul them away.
Okay, and then my next question is with regard to subsection six, which states, "The construction contingency is to cover unknown factors that may adversely affect cost, such as bidding of subcontracts, major material supply items, estimating assumptions and ambiguities, construction scheduling and productivity. In general, the construction contingency is to be used for cost overruns, not generated or initiated by the owner or its agents." Okay, so my question there is, these unknown factors that could adversely affect costs, such as bidding of subcontracts. Okay, so from the page where you were originally discussing, Mr. Sullivan, the outline of the bids and the bid amounts, those are by the vendors or subs essentially? So there's no ambiguity with regard to who's providing these or at what cost, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm a little confused by then how we need the level of construction contingency that we need for this, underpinning the GMP.
Anytime you, whether it be a hard bid or whether it be a construction management-type delivery method, you always want to have contingency in your plans, whether it be on the preparation of an engineer's estimate or whether it be on the construction management budget for his delivery. I understand your point that why do we need contingency now that we've opened all the bids and we see what they are? But we will have things that will come up during the project that were unforeseen. And it's always good to have that budget, that, that amount of money to tap into as a resource, so that we don't have to come back.
And that's pretty much an industry standard. We did that on, on the eleven million dollars at the Reed Center in the Sheridan. But they can't spend that money without us signing it. It has to be signed. It's, they don't control it, we control it.
As project manager, I, I will be signing off on, well, I don't sign anything. Tim ultimately signs. But we sign off on any expenses out of that contingency fund.
Right, and how much is the contingency, I guess is my question, because I'm seeing the GMP, and I mean, I'm seeing the bid, but I'm not.
Seventy-five thousand, which is a pretty low amount on a two-million-dollar project.
Yeah, it's usually around.
Usually five to ten percent.
Well, and I know, never mind, I'm not even gonna make that statement. I have one other question, I'm sorry. So with the, I feel like I'm turning into Pat Burn all of a sudden. With the expansion of.
Not sure I would take that, Mr. Burn.
Wait for it, wait for it, wait for it. You haven't, you haven't done your job for tonight, so I feel like I have to do this. With the expansion of the number of parking spaces related to this addition to the MAC, are we going to be creating any drainage problems for ourselves?
Are we going to be able, are we creating any drainage problems for the city of Midwest City?
Off, from that, from that project, I mean, from the project, is there gonna be, are we?
We, we are being highly regulated by the city of Oklahoma City with all of our discharge from this site into Soldier Creek. Does the water ultimately come onto Midwest City? Yes, it does, through Soldier, eventually out through Soldier Creek. Are we creating impervious surface? Yes, we are, but we're not, we're meeting all their requirements.
Okay, we're not anticipating an adverse effect or impact to being, I hate to reuse the word "developed," but created by the additional impervious surfaces that create additional runoff. That's my question.
I am going to answer that question very carefully. We are building additional impervious surface. We will be adding to the runoff into Soldier Creek. Does that help?
Do we expect that the volume of Soldier Creek will be able to handle that additional runoff without causing damage to Midwest City properties?
We are doing everything that the city of Oklahoma City is requiring of us when it comes to stormwater runoff and the protection of the watershed, and everything that the engineers in the city of, at the city of Oklahoma City have requested of us. I think I will leave it at that.
Okay, so I.
I'm not trying to avoid your question.
No, I've gestured to my colleague, who's the expert on drainage. He's the subject matter expert on the horseshoe, and so he's given me the nod, so I'm going to stop asking questions now.
They are not required us to build any detention on the, on the site.
Okay.
It must, the surface area must be within their guidelines to not require detention, because they are not requiring us to build any detention.
I was just gonna say, could you, how big is the parking lot going to be? It's.
It's a hundred and fifty spaces area. I don't, I don't, I'd have to look at the plans. It's not very big.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. It's not that big. We're not adding that much.
I would equate it to, Ms. Eads, I would equate it to about the size of the parking lot here on the west side of this building.
It's, it's not that big, and the good news is, right out in front of where the parking lot is, is a drainage area where it will drain into before it goes into Soldier Creek. So some of it will slope towards Soldier Creek, some of it will slope towards the front, hit that drainage, and then go to Soldier Creek. And there is some vegetation buffer between the parking lot and that drainage area. So some of it will be caught, and it can be slowed down and allowed to absorb in before it gets to Soldier Creek. And there is some vegetation buffer between the parking lot and that drainage area. So some of it will be caught, and it can be slowed down and allowed to absorb in before it gets to Soldier Creek, from what I understand of the topography.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That is out there.
Are there any further questions? Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel.
Ladies and gentlemen, move into new business public discussions. Does anyone have anything to bring for the council? Hearing or seeing none, and we've taken care of the executive session. We're hereby adjourned. I call the order of the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We have two discussion items on this agenda. Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration possible action of approving the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item number two.
Discussion consideration possible action of, one, accepting and entering into the Delta Hotels by Marriott International, Inc. franchise agreement for the municipal authority property located at fifty-seven fifty Will Rogers Road, Midwest City, Oklahoma, seven, three, one, one, zero, and two, terminating the franchise agreement between Sheridan LLC and Marriott International. Any questions? Mr. Rushing is here to answer them.
Yeah, as you may recall, in two thousand and nineteen, Tim started the process, signed a letter of intent to pursue the remodel to provide the property improvement plans that were required by Marriott. And so, we see a light at the end of the tunnel, and it is a vacancy sign, and we're ready to get that place going. So we look forward to moving forward.
Move to approve.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rushing. We now move into the new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring for the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call the order of the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We have two discussion items on this agenda. Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration possible action of approving the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item number two.
No action needed.
No action needed on number two. We move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring for the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call the order of the Special Economic Development Authority. We have one discussion item.
Discussion consideration possible action of approving the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. We move into public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring for the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call the order of the special, Midwest City Special Utilities Authority. We have one discussion item. Mr. Lyon.
Discussion consideration possible action to approve the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes.
I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. We move into public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring for the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby adjourned, and we are done.